We'll call this meeting and make the county board of commissioners to order. This is our regular December meeting, and we'd like to welcome everybody here. And we'll especially welcome our newest board member. This is the first official meeting. This is Gay Shields. Thank you so much. Welcome to you. And welcome to you. Glad, thank you folks for being here. I appreciate you being here. We have a couple of announcements that we'll do right up front. We have Mr. Austin Posey. He's here. Austin, if you want to come on in, we'll turn the floor over to you. Welcome.
My name is Austin Posey. I'm here to apologize for my actions every year again. On 2013, I was involved with breaking and vandalism at County School. And I will not make excuses for my behavior. There are no excuses for my actions that night. Since then, I have completed 17 months of supervisory probation, 100 hours of community service, and completed alcohol passes with varying streams. The last 17 months since that incident hasn't been easy without bumps and ups. But thanks to a great support staff and family and friends, I've got through the difficult times. I currently own my own law care landscaping company and keep myself busy year-round with that. And if all goes well, I'll complete probation in January and look forward to moving along from my mistakes. So again, I'd like to thank you for, or I'd like to apologize for my own simple behavior. I thank you very much.
Austin, how old are you?
Nineteen.
Well, I appreciate you doing that. It takes a lot of guts to say what's wrong and especially say it in front of ladies and people who are older than you. Probably a lot of us have been thinking we need to apologize for that too. Do I hear your name yet in the audience?
Yeah.
So we appreciate that.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Austin. Good luck.
Ye who's without sin has the first stone. I'm not a rock thrower. Thank you, Austin. We have a, from time to time, we have a video presentation from North Carolina. We are, our county is a member of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners as all 100 counties are.
Yes.
And many of you in the room may already know Mr. Ronnie Beal, who's one of our board members, is the current president of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. So we're, we're very active and supportive of that statewide organization. We're right now in the middle of what are called legislative goals. We take things that are important to us at a local level. We go to Raleigh and tell the legislature that it's important, and they, they do tend to listen to us. And I will say Senator Davis, we met with him today. And that's part of what we do is communicate with lawmakers in Raleigh because what they do in Raleigh does affect us here. So with that said, Mike, if you're ready, hurry up.
Hi. My name's Kevin Leonard, and I'm honored to be your executive director of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. On behalf of all of our staff here at the association, I would like to extend to you a special vote to the board and a congratulations to our newly elected commissioners. Being a county commissioner, we know can be challenging, sometimes a thankless job. But please know that we appreciate all of you who are willing to step up and be a leader in your county and in your state. It's an exciting time here at our association. It's a time of change, transition, and new ideas. And my hope is to hear from you about your new ideas that will make our association even stronger as we move forward. In this brief video, you will hear about some upcoming opportunities for you to learn more about county government and our association. We're actually in the process of developing our legislative agenda for the upcoming by inning, and it's not too late for you to get involved. I encourage you to attend our Legislative Goals Conference, which will be held in Moore County this January, to learn about the legislative issues and to get involved in our grassroots advocacy efforts. You know, we're very fortunate that our association in North Carolina is one of the strongest county government associations in the entire nation. And our secret? Our secret is you. Through your active participation, together we are 100 counties strong, and together we can do great things. As always, please call us if we can be of any assistance, and I look forward to seeing you soon.
The association has completed the first three stages of its five-step legislative goals process. The last stage, their legislative goals conference, is January 15th and 16th in Moore County. We have 45 goals still under consideration regarding issues as diverse and critical as mental health, 911 funding, bond band services, Medicaid, school construction funding, and economic development, among many others. At the conference, county commissioners such as yourself will debate and vote on those goals remaining after board approval in December. All 100 counties have the opportunity to send one voted delegate to be part of the final decision on NCACC's 2015-16 legislative agenda. Make sure your county is part of the process by registering on our website. We need input from all regions of the state to give us the strongest position possible to advocate for your agenda at the general.
One of the association's primary responsibilities is to help you understand your roles and responsibilities as county commissioners. There are numerous educational opportunities coming up in the next few months. The first is for new board chairs and vice chairs on January 14th in Moore County. This day-long session will teach presiding officers the rules of procedure and how to manage a meeting. At the end of the day, all board members are invited to a discussion of general parliamentary procedure. In addition to this training, every two years following county government elections, we partner with the School of Government at the University of North Carolina to sponsor the Essentials of County Government schools. The comprehensive two-day course serves as an orientation to county government law and practice for new and veteran county commissioners. It is the foundation course for earning credits in the local elected leaders academy. The Essential Schools will be offered in four locations throughout the state in January and February. The curriculum includes basic county government law, local taxation and the financing of county government services, handling conflicts of interest, public school financing, and building relationships with other boards and interests. Also included is the two-hour mandatory ethics training required by state law for every new or returning commissioner within one year of election or reelection. Veteran commissioners not enrolled in the Essentials classes, as well as municipal elected officials, can attend this advanced seminar for a modest fee. To learn more about these programs, please visit our website at the address on your screen.
I want to make everyone aware of a new service we rolled out in November this year. It's a human resources legal hotline, and it is designed to assist risk pool members with basic time-sensitive employment issues, such as employee terminations, addressing harassment or discrimination allegations, or even requests for reasonable accommodations. Basically, issues that if handled improperly could lead to litigation and avoid HR problems. We've contracted directly with risk pool attorneys that have strong employment law experience in order to provide sound HR legal advice at no initial cost to our membership. If you are a member of this management pools, and you do have to be a member to have access, you should have received information from me in November about how to gain access and utilize this service. This is yet another example of our efforts to continually improve our risk management product and services, adding value to an already superior government-based risk coverage and finance program. And in fact, the NCACC Risk Management Pools are the number-one provider of property and liability and workers' compensation coverage for the entire state, with 68 of the 100 counties participating as risk pool members. And Mr. Chairman, I think you may be there. This is Chuck Sutton. He might have dropped off to fiscal year 15, '16, community services block grant applications. This is every year. The reason he's dropping off is for every day review period that is set for that grant to give the county commissioner to renew that grant application. So just informing the board that that grant application will be in my office available for review at your convenience. Thank you.
Any other announcements?
Mr. Chairman, we will talk about the RPO with the rest of this board. We've been notified with DOT and from Ms. Boggs, RPO coordinator from Southwest. But here's what we know now, that truck turnaround in the four lane has been approved and funded. That's going up the highway road to get in the four lane. That has been approved and funded. Please Bill, the study has been for the Prince Creek Road, US 64. And the thing we really had put in for is 0.8 miles from US 64 wide riding. That has been funded and scheduled for 2019. I think everybody knows what that is. It's not 21 turnout. So there'll be some other information. We do have a meeting with DOT next week. Please Bill, the study and some other things we'd ask for from May and Jim. But we were very pleased that those things ran well from the system. And we'll see how we do next week. So far, in terms of, that's what we know for sure.
Any other announcements? The doctor's standing before the staff, please. And I wish, uh, Shields, you have to add a few links, please.
Thank you. The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You're seated. We have a place on our agenda for public hearings, and we have done it this month. Austin, thank you for having me. I'm surprised you don't want to stay in the rest of our meeting. I understand. We have no public hearing schedule. We have a public comment period. I have three people. Make sure we got Jim Gray. We have Bill Mann, the board, and Randy Martin have signed up. Is there anybody else here that would like to speak to the board about any matter? Okay, those are three. And I recognize the first on the list is Jim Gray, and he's here according to his notes, representing Rough and Grouse Society.
The Rough and Grouse Society and basically the hunters of Macon County.
Who's with that group that's here? Thank you.
Ready? Commissioner Corbin, or Chairman Corbin and commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. And Commissioner Shields, congratulations on your election. I voted for you, just remember that. But I could only vote once. I'm registered Republican. I speak tonight to urge you to stand by the resolution you passed on July 8th asking the U.S. Forest Service to not establish any new wilderness areas in Macon County. It was a courageous action and one that will prove to be the right decision over the years to come. You have been joined by your fellow commissioners in Clay, Graham, and Cherokee Counties in passing similar resolutions. In the Friday Macon County news, Mayor Scott and some others had a lot to say about the resolution and their opposition to it, and we believe they're spreading a misleading vision of vast clear-cut forests if the Forest Service implements the plan presented in their October-November outline. Forest Service has learned a lot over the years and no longer allows the kind of timber harvest that these folks would have you believe will happen. Today's timber cuts are much smaller, riparian areas are protected, access roads are better designed, scenic areas are not cut, and on and on. It's time for our national forests to achieve balance between being turned into quasi-national parks and being managed for their original intent, which is lawful use, including timber production and greatly increased wildlife considerations. The pendulum has swung too far toward blind preservation. Almost no wildlife thrives in mature closed canopy forests. Many species of wildlife thrive in mixed age forests, including regrowth forests resulting from timber cutting. These include non-gamed species, gamed species, and threatened species, such as the golden winged warbler. At this stage of the current Forest Service plan, 20% of the forest was to be in trees younger than 20 years, compatible with what people are looking for when they're walking the trail. So we're not in any conflict with the trail situation at all.
Should we, Bill, anything else?
Well, sir, I will say that when you express your opinion as commissioners of Macon County, I take that to mean you're expressing the opinion of at least 51% of the counties. Now, if you express your opinion then as an individual, that's fine. But when a resolution is passed, maybe I took it the wrong way, but I'm not, you know, I'm not 100% sure that you have 51% of the voters in Macon County behind you when you pass that resolution. That's the way it came across to me. And I do believe that you were not given all the best information upon which to make your decision. That's my personal.
Okay. I appreciate it. Just to clarify, when this board passes a resolution, we're passing the resolution as the opinion of the council. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I just want to add one thing about information and where it's come from. With the Forest Service plan that's been going on for the last two years, wildlife habitat has been numbered on in that concern, and that hasn't been brought up. This thing has been going on for two years. Public input and comment has been going on, and wildlife habitat has been numbered on. So let's don't forget that.
And just to go back, let me, let me agree wholeheartedly with something that Grant said. I think we need to work together for a resolution, for a project resolution, and our passing resolution, and I think it's one which is our, expressing our opinion, certainly not suppressing yours or someone else's.
Well, but the price of a resolution, that's a wilderness area. It takes on a lot of, that was just our opinion at the time. And if Forest Service comes back and makes a decision, then our resolution will be. But as far as, as far as more wilderness area, you talk to the hunters. We have a great number, not only the hunters of Lake County, but the people who have helped. There's a great number four back there. And things we need to understand, what makes the wilderness here, and we have that mission funded, so we're back to that too. And so we just have our opinion, and it's been going on for two years, it's going on for two years more. There'll be a lot more needed. You see the Forest Service map, which I've looked at, of their destination, goes back to Robin's bill in 2012, it's the first meeting sale. I was at it. And so it's, it's going to be a long discussion, and when you get people that will work, like Lynn Martin, because I think everybody's been there, Lynn and Bill and all, and what they do for the asset and trade. Everybody wins this camp. I think everybody's focused on the buy plus. I think what we have to decide is this board gets the economic potential. Not only are we worried about paying the little taxes, which is fire again for Congress now, which is 400 grand discount. That's what they pay us, not to mention the lottery revenue. You see the Bill's budget for us, $1.5 million in the past year. So it's, it's, we look at it more than just, just the wilderness side, the hunting side, but we get some economics in the county. And that's a big, and that's a big thing we, I think, in my opinion, is what we have to look at.
Okay. Thanks very much, Jim. Appreciate it. You welcome to stay for our whole meeting. It's supper. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Number seven is adjustments to approval of the agenda. Gentlemen, do we have anything to add and to leave for a minute on the agenda?
Chairman, I'd like to add, out of another 10, B, my new business, I'm going to be 11. We have to do authorization, sprinkle survey, begin full asphalt class, departmental. That all is scheduled. It's all happening.
And we do have, just about, we do have a close session for attorney, client, and client privilege. Isn't that to you, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, it is.
And that's to confer with, for you to confer with us as legal counsel. Okay, gentlemen, you have the agenda. We have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. So the second, motion and second discussion. Here's going to all players say aye. Aye. Abode. And that motion passes. Number eight, we have, we'd ask Richard Lockman, Richard is a tax administrator, working very hard. Richard Lockman is presenting some information on the property revaluation. Please welcome.
It could be before the board, and especially Mr. Shields joining the board. You know, we've talked over the last number of years, since about 2010, actually before that, 2029, about going to reap for 2011, and then we put it off. And I got a presentation, and there's some numbers at the end that will show you that that decision to put it off was a good decision. And I actually even had two newspapers call about this. One was a local one, and one was out of Raleigh. So this is, hate to bring Mr. Shields saying that the next few months is going to be, your phone's ringing a lot. If you, let's put the numbers in perspective. 10% is considered a good appraisal, 10% appeals, but that's still 4,000 appeals. So if you took 10% of that, say 400 people, you know, that would decide to contact the commission, you've got a lot of phone calls. So, you know, the numbers are so large that any percentage is something you need to seriously, you know, understand, and that's why we're here tonight. Okay, the first question is why revalue my property? Some of this is going to be repetitious, and I'll go through that pretty quick, but since we do have a new member, I need to bring you up and refresh memory. And just like the picture there, you know, all those lightning strikes, well, there's, as we saw earlier, there's many different opinions on value, why we do it, when we do it, and if we did it correctly. But the opinion that matters is North Carolina General Statute 105, 286, and 283. And we are required to establish market value, must be at 100% of value. Utility companies, when we fall below 100%, then they get a weighted average that will drop their values, and usually that would amount to about $150,000 of revenue a year that the county would lose until they reappraise. But with the soft economy, we did not have to worry about that. And also the change in market. When we was doing the last assessment, the market was going up on an average 30% a year in some markets, and in four years, the property values would double. Well, that hadn't happened in recent times. The appraisal process, a lot of people think, well, you just go out there and do it. It's different from a person doing one house. We have to collect and review all sales. We got 369 county maps. We have to look at sales from 13 and 14. We have to look at construction costs. Like Mr. Bill, I know he's charging probably higher than the average sale price on them. It costs you more to build an house than it would to buy one in the market if you found a similar structure. Look at land pricing. We have a lot of different lands in Macon County. We've got lakefront, we've got riverfront, we've got beauty tops, we've got resort areas, we've got farmland, we've got rock outcropping, we've got land that's inaccessible, land that has a lot of topo. We have in Macon County over 99 different soil classifications, and that's one of the largest number of classifications in the state. You go down east, there's about 10 soil classifications in each county. So that's how much diversification we have. We have to develop a land pricing schedule of values, and that goes back a few months ago when we came, and we mentioned the schedule of values, about 200 pages thick, where that's already been approved and the appeal's gone. So those things are set in stone now. We can't do anything unless it's in that schedule of value. Anytime we go to Raleigh, it defends that schedule of value as it applies to property. And the only time that will change is the next reappraisal. We visit properties. A lot of counties don't visit properties. For the ones that have been around last year or two, Mecklenburg County has not visited a property in 17 years. That's a big problem, especially when you're growing like Mecklenburg, or even growing like we were here. So we do visit properties. Then we look at sales, we identify areas that are concerned, and we continue to do that for the whole project. When we find an area, we correct it, and then we get to the point of establishing value and sending notices. We'll have informal appeals, and that will start in January about mid-time. And those appeals are handled within our staff. That's not in the general statutes anywhere, but that's developed over the last 30 years, 40 years in North Carolina, because you don't want a board of equalization sitting there for seven months here in 4,000 buildings. And you pay the board of equalization, and you know, it's a big expense, and then getting people to sit there, it just, it's not efficient. You wouldn't have time. You would be trying to do a budget in hearings going on way past that. So that's the system that's developed. Then we send a second notice, and then we start the board of equalization. They bylaw, and I'll start in Joe April. And after the hearing, you have 30 days to appeal to the state, and if you appeal to the state, that may take up to two years or more to hear that appeal. The approach to values, these are the same approaches that got That's not in the general statutes anywhere. But that's developed over the last thirty years, forty years in North Carolina. Because you don't want a board of equalization sitting there for seven months here in four thousand buildings. And you pay the board of equalization, and, you know, it's a big expense, and then getting people to sit there, it just, it's not efficient. You wouldn't have time. You would be trying to do a budget in hearings going on way past that. So, that's the system that's developed. Then we send a second notice, and then we start the board of equalization. They bylaw, and I'll start in Joe April. And after the hearing, you have thirty days to appeal to the state. And if you appeal to the state, that may take up to two years or more to hear that appeal. The approach to values, these are the same approaches that God, or Dwight, or any of those appraisals took. You've got comparable sales, you look at sales of property that are similar. You've got income approach, that applies to commercial properties. If that property can develop an income that sustains that property and makes the owner a profit. Cost approach is usually the historic cost less depreciation. Market value, this is the definition of market value, and is what the courts have upheld. Market value is the probable selling price of property will bring in a competitive open market with both the buyer and seller being motivated and willing to form. In that sentence there, you didn't read forced sales, short sale, option sale, bank sale, estate sales, all those types of sales. They're not there, because that's not a market, and that's not the definition of where the values need to be. And here's a reading of what I just said. Those type of sales are not allowed. Now, there's a lot of people that say, well, you have to use them. They have a bearing on market value. If you have a lot of these type of sales, then the investor, being you owning your home, you can't go out there and get top dollar if you're competing against something in the market that is going to be cheaper. So, they do have a bearing, but you can't use them establishing your baselines. What affects market value the most? Of course, addition or remodeling a structure, square footage times your cost is always a big thing. Supply and demand, you hear that from basic economics to basic real estate. If you have something that's in high demand and a low supply, price is going up. And the opposite is true, the other way. Local economy, we can add, actually add national economy now, and I'll get to a slide in a minute. You know, things started to go downhill in oh-six, there about oh-seven, but it really did not hit Macon County until twenty-ten. And you'll see the numbers in a minute, that that's where it really kind of bottomed out, and then we went from there. And cost replacing building structures, and that used to be a bigger thing than it is now. What happens now is, you just really have to have a piece of property that you love, you inherited it, you owned it for twenty-five years, you're going to build the rest, your retirement home on it. So, there's not a structure, you're going to pay Mr. Bill, or somebody else come out there and build it. The other option is, I move in here, and, or I sold my house, I just looking for something in the market that I can look at an older home or something, and I probably would get a better deal than building my own. Macon County's growth, this is still holding true. At one time, we were the fastest in western North Carolina for percentage growth. But even so, you look at that graph, we are still coming and pushing towards forty thousand people. And that does not include all the part-time residents. You know, the part-time residents, if you took every house and put somebody in it, we'd be well over sixty thousand. But, this is permanent residency, so that's still, it's holding. We're not losing people, as the last census showed, we didn't lose people, so we're still growing. Parceling count, as you can see there, in the nineties, we were around thirty-one thousand. Right now, we're up to around forty-five thousand. So, properties are still being divided, still being cut. It's slowed down considerably, there's a lot of inventory out there, lots and small lots that need to be combined, don't need present, exempted tank approvals and all that. So, we still have some, and you combine those over the years, so your numbers fluctuate depending on the economy. This is real estate market indicators. And if you look in two thousand and ten, about all three of those, four of those lines were way down there. It, down in the hundreds range. And as you see, as you get out towards twenty-fourteen, all the numbers have increased in the last couple of years. Three of them that's taken a complete, you know, ninety-degree turn almost. Real estate sales, look at sales, twenty-ten, we're down below two thousand. We are now at over twenty-five hundred, twenty-eight hundred for this year, so it's coming back too. And the treatment has been going up for the last four or five years. And that's what I'm saying, back in twenty-ten, when we was talking about putting this off in two oh nine, we was hitting bottom, we didn't have anything. And this decision to postpone it has allowed us to get more of a market fix. Exclusive home sales, everybody talks about homes and values and where they are. Twenty-ten was back by eleven. If you look at that now, the ones over a million, there've been over thirty sold. And if you look at the ones in the five hundred, thousand range up, it's over seventy-five sold. And if you look at the two million dollar listings, they've doubled in just in one year. So, yeah, that's, that's shown a real strong indicator of the market is rebounding. And the people that are invested in other things, people that, in these type of homes, are usually betting real estate and stocks and bonds, and the market's been strong. Real, the financial markets have been extremely strong. So now they're moving money back into investment type situations that involve real estate. And here's your actual real estate market. I'm not going to go over that, but you can look and see, goes from the right to the left. You can see the increases there in the blue, the totals, there's steadily increased, and the one for twenty-fourteen, that's just through nine months. So, when you add the last month on there, it will be above the twenty-four sixty-eight market. As you can see, in the million dollar sales, we have twenty-five over a million dollars this year already, compared to eleven last year, and six in two thousand and eleven. So, market is doing what we had hoped it would do. Revenue neutral for their balance. Tax rate of property, we have a taxable value right now of nine point three billion dollars. The tax rate is twenty-seven nine. If you took that, this is raw numbers before lost, if you took those two numbers multiplied, we need about point six million dollars a year for general taxes. This is the two thousand and fifteen look. Your real estate's going to drop to seven point seven million. Your public service is one thirty, one hundred and thirty million. Your motor vehicles are about two hundred and seventy-one million. And those are collected now at the tax agency, the state reimburses them, but you still have to have an idea what that is. So, our total is eight point one billion dollars before appeals. And just like last time, the time before, we put about a hundred million dollars back for appeals, because you don't know what's going to show up. You may have computer glitch on an area, you may have some, we've not used that amount before, but you have to plan. Homestead conclusions, that's about seventy million, that's your old age and disability part that people are entitled to if they meet guidelines. So, our net tax value is seven point nine billion dollars, from about nine point three. You take that value, and it's overall a decrease of fourteen point eight percent. That's including personal property. Just real estate is decreasing at fourteen point five-two percent. You get that by those two numbers, seven point five divided by eight point eight. Eight point eight is what the real estate is now. Nine point three four eight is everything taxable. So, what you have is that difference there, five hundred thousand dollars, five hundred million dollars. That's at a hundred percent, so when you add that back, it actually affects it by thirty-eight point three-eight percent more that you have to allow for. If you took the same amount of money that we needed this year, divided by the tax value, you come up with a rounded figure of thirty-three. Now, that figure is based on, nothing changes in your required for money, state cutting your, anything. It also does not include the tax collection rate. If you only, if you collect a hundred percent of the money, it's thirty-three cents. If you collect fifty percent of the money, it's sixty-six cents. So, that comes into play. Okay, now, this is some examples, values of what they were in oh-seven. When I say oh-seven value, you've got to put in mind, it's oh-seven to fourteen. They could have built a house three years ago, and it's still in oh-seven value. This house is up in Highlands area, value is one point two million dollars. They paid thirty-four hundred dollars in taxes. The new value is nine hundred and thirty-five thousand. And the base tax will be a savings of three hundred and ninety-six dollars, or eleven point four percent. This also is in the Highlands district. Three hundred and sixteen thousand dollar value, that's, you know, reasonable price out. Base tax, eight eighty-two, it's going to drop to two sixty. They're going to see a savings of twenty-three dollars, or a decrease of two point six. And you can see those three things, and I explained this to Mr. Shields earlier. You know, there's so many houses, you've got thirty-five, thirty-six thousand people, they have to live somewhere. It depends what district you're in, how much you're going to pay for the average homestead. So, you can't just do away with the homestead and say, everything's going to go up thirty percent, down thirty percent on that. Those people, an average homestead, are going to see a less decrease in taxes. And more than likely, depending how close they are to the median, they're going to see an increase. Because somebody's got to pay for the shift. You're equalizing value. So, if this up here gets a twenty percent decrease because it has timberland, and this one down here gets ten percent, an average fourteen, well, mine don't change. That means I'm getting fourteen percent tax increase. And that's mathematics, statistics, there's nothing this board, anybody else, can do about that. That's the way math works out. This one's in Highland, up in the west. Did Highlands, because I wanted, I did a presentation up there a number of weeks ago, months ago, and I pulled a lot of Highlands, and, because those were the newest figures I had. We do Highland flat, and then we clean up Highland and Franklin together. There are some down here in a minute. Hundred and forty-eight thousand, this is a double-wide mobile home, which is very, very local. It's in the Fair Creek community, I believe. So, taxes is four thirteen, their new one will be three thirty-three, so they save eighty dollars, which is twenty percent savings. This is Highlands, and, and to be fair to everybody, this is some bloody political persons, so I'm not picking on individuals. I'm just saying, we've got, we've paid one of everybody in there. This is one point one million, and hey, three thousand, two fifty-five, will go to nine oh seven, and they'll save about two hundred and sixty dollars, or a decrease of eight percent.
Somebody we know.
Not mine.
This is Smithbridge, no, I'm sorry, this one. Five hundred and twenty thousand, it's going to three ninety-six, and they're going to end up saving a hundred and forty-nine dollars, or ten point four percent.
If you notice, oh, man, it's got seventeen acres. Is, is the land in the portion dropping more, or is it a number of acres, ten and a half?
And it also depends on land, like if you're in the used value and things like that, property. Yeah, but if you're in the farm programs in Denver, you're actually, even though you pay the same rates, and then you're saved even in used value, so the farmers and large tract homes will even save more than what they would if they came out and had to pay the mortgage back. This here, probably downtown Highlands, and I put this in here because downtown Highlands is really strong right now. If you haven't been there, go there, because they're tearing down things to build there. This place sold last couple of months, sold for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That's getting poured down, and the only property where that property, house is, is where that house sits. You have no more property, I mean, it's that narrow. But they're going to redevelop and put some other structure there. But as you can see, they'll have an increase of forty-two percent, because we had it substandard, very much substandard. It actually did, dinner was being used in oh-seven, now it's being demolished, so the land is worth what the whole structure was. So, you can see how, even though the values don't change that much, they're going to get a huge increase.
Did, did sales price affect this value? Simply to jump into your presentation, let me just go down one to the left, to the left.
No, that just happened to be, that's probably average for that area. Downtown is selling, they are actually taking properties, tearing these things down, with more land and building million-dollar houses on some of it. O E I, Old Edward Town, they started, when we took that picture, on another location in county. They started six or seven townhouses, pre-sold them all for over one point one billion dollars. We was on another site that had six, and I think started three more, and those are pretty well pre-sold at a billion dollars. So, what Highland did, and I talked to a realtor up there today, people with money want to be in walking distance of the restaurants and everything else. And the downtown walking area is just exploded, and that's in that area. This is another house, one million, and it's going up. It actually sold for over one point eight million, so it, or she's going to have a hundred and eighteen percent increase.
But the sales price affect the market, but the tax value?
Yeah, I mean, you still have, if, if you got something, you paying something for something, then yes, it could affect your value, because these are all custom homes. It's not tract homes. I talked to, uh, the press, the AP Press out of Raleigh today. When you get in the mountains, you're on the coast, everything's custom. And so, it may be on the same lot, the houses are totally designed for the owners. So, when these things sell, it has a direct correlation. And I'll give you another one, there's one at the end, it sold twelve and a half million dollars. There's nothing in the market. When you get in homes over a million dollars, the market is not western North Carolina, that's the market is. If I start on looking at that, I have to go to similar locations in other counties and other states. So, yes, it could affect it.
But it's inversely, if you have high-end property, the value of high million-dollar lot, you know, those things are selling for twenty thousand dollars.
If that's the market, I don't have many half-million-dollar things selling for twenty, that's that wild card.
Yeah, you got a lot of two-hundred thousand dollars to sell it for fifteen.
But like I just pointed out before this slide, the million-dollar range is coming back in Highlands. But like I just pointed out before this slide, the million dollar range is coming back in Highlands. As I said, the million dollars are pretty common in the downtown central area. And when you also get out and about into the resorts and other areas, um, Blue Valley or something, where they got, uh, a great view or amenity package or something, people are paying a premium dollar.
But the low, the low, uh, inventory in Highlands also did place a lot of the stake. We just thought it, you thought we had to have it in Highlands.
Yeah, I mean, it's always your spot of advantage, it always goes back to that. But then it's also what the item is yourself. If I have a really high zone that's got a nice amenities and everything else, that's going to command a price of eighty percent more than what it was.
But that's not a dick.
And it could have been remodeled too. I'll show you another slide and we'll get. This is a hundred and fifteen, that's down here. This is what I'm saying, it's just a flat market area, it's going to a hundred and eleven. They're going to have an increase of forty six dollars, which is fourteen percent. So fourteen percent means a whole lot different to somebody in this house and fourteen percent in their last house. I mean, it's quite a difference. This down here also, one twenty seven, it almost stays similar, uh, but they'll have a sixty four percent increase or eighteen percent increase. Uh, I mean, even if you're, you're right there at the median, then you're going to pick up the burden of shift. This is the one that sold for twelve and a half million dollars. This is split between us and Jackson County. So that twelve and a half million dollar sale, I had to prorate the part that they made. So it goes down by four million dollars in our part. His tax reduction is five thousand eight hundred dollars, which is fourteen percent. It's still the same percentage, but you can see the dollars are much bigger.
What was the tax value prior to this sale?
I'm sorry?
What was the tax value?
Oh, it was, that, everything is fourteen million just on what this represents. So it went down to twelve and a half. And I know this house, we had this under Phil when we built it. He got tired of the house and he moved. Uh, it cost him almost, not much less than that ten million dollars it was built, so, uh, took a lot. Okay, finally, um, reassessments are volatile, but there has to be established procedures go through them. As I said, I hope you understood that as we looked at these slides. Um, the percentages should be uniform, they should be similar. If the, if they're apples for apples and that's what you want. The deal process defined, we need follow that. You know, a number of years ago, I think it's nineteen ninety one, we set, established a separate board of equalization. So the commissioners didn't have to meet every day for every, and that first board, um, Richard Horn Dexter was the chairman and everybody else was volunteers. We've, um, gone over the last four of the reassessments. It's all volunteer board, and some of those members have been on there, this would be their third appraisal. So they're seasoned, they're, um, appraiser, real estate, um, people. One retired FHA member, so they, they know the government side, they know the present appraisal side. One is on the North Carolina Board of Examiners for Real Estate Appraisers. So if there's a problem with a real estate appraiser or something, he's on the board. So I mean, we've got a good board, yeah. Um, properties don't increase or decrease the same rate, we just saw that. And one thing that has to come into mind, and this is statute forty two and on all the bill. It's not what you paid last year compared to what you paid this year. What you pay is irrelevant on appeal, here or in Raleigh. The only thing they're looking at is what that property would sell for in an open market under the definition of on land transaction. If your tax bill goes up a hundred dollars or goes down a hundred dollars, that's not even, um, something they even consider. So you have to, you'll get people to come to you and say, my tax bill is going to go up. Well, that's irrelevant, it's what that property's worth. I think Mr. Bill said, three years as chairman, I don't know how many times we're heard that and how many times we have to tell them, nothing to do. Okay, value's got to be at a hundred percent. Uh, value is not what somebody invested in necessarily. Um, give you a simple definition. I go out there and I own tract lands, I cut the wood, I dry the wood, I build it, I do hand cut shingles. The only thing I buy is electrical plumbing, um, I put hardwood floors and hardwood in it. And do my own block work. So I got forty thousand in this log house, it's not going to be valued at forty thousand. It's what that thing itself is. Commercial's not going to go up the same as residential by person. Location or demand affects it greater. Percentage of increase or decrease is not, it's one of those areas, not an area that you can appeal on. Mine went up too much, mine went down too much. When you come in, you have to say, my property is valued at a hundred thousand dollars. The market, I believe it's only worth seventy eight thousand. Okay, Mr. Jones, show us how you can move seventy eight thousand. The burden of proof is on the taxpayers by state law, by the force of law. So they have to provide something. In the thirty years I've been here, I don't know how many times we're getting Raleigh, and we let the taxpayers say whatever they're going to say to the committee like this. A lot of times, their attorney from Mecklenburg County will make a motion dismiss based on the evidence. And I don't know how many times I've made that six hour trip to Raleigh for a fifteen minute presentation, a motion, and come back home. You always have to defend, the burden of proof is on taxpayers. Values will be done in December, we're ninety point nine nine percent ready. Notice to be mailed in January, probably around the fifteenth. We have these come through until December thirty first. I have to send the other stuff out and then send this out. Appeals information will be in there, I'll show you in a minute. Appeal form will be there, give you directions and that. Informal appeals must be supported by documentation and Board of Equalization in April. This is the copy of the appeal form right here. Um, this is the one that you'll get in the mail, it's two pages. And you can read through it up, um, I'll send this all to you. This presentation is on our website, so it's out there now. Um, I can email to the board, and I got printouts here. But it asks you to compare with the property and all that. So you, you fill that out, send it in, and after thirty days, we take all these appeals, we put them in map sheet. Because you don't want to change Mr. Jones', and then Mr. Shields come in three weeks later and you change Mr. Jones'. And Mr. Shields got the same problem, or a similar problem, you want to look at the whole area. So that's why it's done that way, and it's been done that way for a number of years. We'll send you information that Mr. Jones', your appeal was successful, we reduced it to X dollars. You have thirty days to file a appeal with the Board of Equalization. If it does not, then this appeal's done. Go with Board of Equalization, and when they start meeting up here, they'll do the same thing. You'll get another notice, Mr. Jones', your appeal was not successful, you got thirty days to go to Raleigh, and then he'll file there. One thing we're doing in, you know, in Mecklenburg County, we've been real progressive, I came in in eighty five. Kevin and I have done every assessment since the one in ninety one. Ninety one, we would have had one in ninety five, they got political and they didn't want to do another one. So we did one, one ninety one, ninety nine, two oh three, two oh seven, and this one. And we have put things in place all over. What we're going to do now, I'm getting a computer program done, you can go on our website, you'll have a similar form. You'll be able to type in there all your information. It will be brought back into our system, your email and all that. It will be entered into our, um, appeal system in our computer, that's what I'm saying. It will then be entered into our G I S systems, and we'll do appeals to that whole system. There's only one county in North Carolina that does a appeal to even take some online, that's Durham County. And the same system in our county would cost in excess of forty thousand per year for fifteen hundred kids. So, um, we've beaten our brains around it, and we came up with a solution that Mecklenburg's going to do for a long time cost. And it ain't going to cost that, and nobody has it tied to their campus system, nobody has it tied to the G I S system. So we will continue to lead in that aspect. What does the reappraisal cost? This reappraisal cost us three hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the last eight years. Last discovery, the last two years, we had found a hundred and thirty three thousand dollar worth of taxes that people weren't paying on because they had a house. So that lowers that net cost down to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Divided by the number of parcels, it's five dollars and ten cents a parcel. If we did not do ourselves and hadn't done it ourselves for the last, um, five times, it would have been much higher. But we saved twenty one dollars and eighty four cents a parcel. So this savings of one million dollars for Kevin and my staff going to this contract. Since ninety nine, we had saved the county four point three million dollars. And that was back in ninety, well, actually eighty seven, well, one, the board form. Yeah, we can do this better and do it ourselves, it was kind of reluctant, that's why we had that problem in ninety one. But these are hard numbers, this is what we saved the county. And question, and right there at Mecklenburg County Tax dot com, that is the website where you'll get any, this presentation or forms or anything else.
Question, good presentation. Let me say, on behalf of the citizens, I want to thank you guys for doing a lot of hard work on the credit council business. It cost us a lot more money than us in-house, and you've done a really good job with this committee. Before that, uh, I'm just opening this up to anybody who's breaking our usual protocol. But, uh, if you have any questions, Richard, about this asking media, uh, anybody from the floor, commissioners, uh, let's, let's answer the questions here. Where if it gets out of hand, I might stop it, but, uh, any question you have, let's, let's ask them all the guys here, Mr. Jones.
I think you mentioned something early on about three hundred tax maps or something, or maps? What, what exactly are those?
The county maps, we got pretty much sixty nine county maps. You know, you can't get, there's not, well, there is one map, but each map is broken down with a number of parcels, the property's on each one. You put it on one map, you couldn't see any of the roads or anything, so each.
The larger the number, the more detailed the.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if, if a map, for example, my house is within a certain map so that when I'm trying to get comparable values, I have to look just in that map, or?
No, as I said earlier, depends on what kind of house you have. This is not a homogeneous county where Mecklenburg County, you go and you have subdivision with six hundred houses. They're all in the range of one hundred and seventy five to two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Here, if I do it, or Dwight Benson does it, you have to look at Thompson, they may be seven, eight miles away. If it's an exclusive house, it may be in two counties away. Uh, so if you go on our site and you search, you can put in there a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand dollar house, three acres of land, whatever. And it'll pull everybody in the county, or it'll pull just the district that you put in. It's all self explainable on the website.
Is there any way for me to know, when you, when you come up with the note, the value for my house, is there any way to know what properties did you use to determine my value?
Well, that goes back to mass appraisal. We look at many numbers. We don't do it as Dwight, I'll pick on Dwight, he's on my board. If I hired Dwight, he goes out there, your house, gets a specific, then he finds three to five, the map chores. Here, we have to be concerned with equity too. So we look at the overall market of fifteen hundred square foot houses and the average quality based on three bedrooms and two baths. And we have to look at them all, and that district may be all Franklin. So we have to use a, uh, a much broader statistical analysis instead of doing it individually.
So these are mostly just computer generated?
No, we do it. We sit down, um, Kevin, myself, and some staff.
Pay a couple of million dollars. That schedule of values that he was talking about earlier has to be applied to each parcel, and, and that's the methodology that they put in.
Yeah, like, if I did every house, first off, you couldn't do it that way. To give you an idea, there's forty thousand properties, so you'd have to hire so many appraisers. And they're going to be within a ten percent range, higher or lower, that's twenty percent. Average would be two hundred dollars a parcel, so that'd be eight million dollars, and it would take probably ten years, so, that's why you can't.
That'd be very expensive way to do it. Any questions? Bobby, any questions?
Could you send copies to the media of your presentation?
Yeah.
Is Mecklenburg County Tax dot com?
Yeah, it's on there.
Oh, it's on the website, okay.
Yeah, just go there, it says two, twenty fifteen appraisal, click and you'll see.
I've already got it.
Mecklenburg Tax dot com. Or maybe a question? Shields or?
Correct. At the community building, I, I came up last week and I was thinking, where is that, two weeks ago? Called Teresa and Andy, we got the community building for tomorrow night. I wanted to make certain the board was the first here. Uh, and I had contacted the end of the board, so, and all heard at the same time, same story. So tomorrow night at six o'clock, community building, we'll present the same thing. And we ran ads in the Highlander and the Franklin Press, and I think we had some very good articles by the newspaper writers. So, you know, this is just another thing to bring them up speed for whoever generates it.
I think it's very important to stress to those here in their board too, that the thirty three cents added glory rate that the tax part, your part, that was given is just as, everything's out of track, everything's dead even.
Yeah.
I think that needs to be stressed.
And a lot of the people in turn, he would, uh, you know, people believe, we've got the lowest tax rate. And I remember me saying, say, well, we then had revaluation. With the revaluation, I think we have the fifth lowest tax rate in the state, if we do revenue, right or wrong?
Correct, and one of those, I think it was Carteret County, they did one in twenty eleven, and they're dropped like a lot of percentage. But they're tax rating it up like eight to ten cents. Well, I know they're going again for twenty fifteen, and they're losing six, seven more percent of property value, so their rate's going to go up again.
And you said in the presentation, but I want to make sure we're clear, had we, we had folks criticized us for putting off the evaluation, had we done it two years ago, would the decrease in property value have been more or less than it is now?
Most definitely been more because we didn't have enough good information, enough.
So, so the right decision, your opinion?
Correct, and then another thing is, you want to get the value as correct as possible. Biggest part of any, one of the big parts of, um, reassessment is, the county has to defend it. I mean, usually it's this man right here, but we have set up with the attorney, the U S B Attorney for Property Tax Mission and Private Business in Raleigh. So Mr. Jones don't have to drive down there, we send everything electronically and we go meet them. But on a reappraisal. But on a reappraisal, depending on size of county, you could spend a quarter of a million dollars going to Raleigh. So, you want to get it right. And this is what I stressed to the board in nineteen eighty-seven. Do it with the people that are going to be here when you send them out. You know, it don't do no good. These people will come in now, but there's many will come in in August, September, November. And when they do, I have three appraisers downstairs that will sit down, okay, Mr. Foreman, okay, I'll be out there and I, I see what you're talking about. And that mean the whole lot. That's where you defend your values. In thirty years, and it may blow the business this year, I don't know. But we've been blessed in thirty years that I've been here, I've not lost cases in Raleigh. And that mainly, not because I'm good, is mainly because we sit down and talk to people. You know, we kind of like this ruffle ground, people talking. Sit down at the table and show your stuff. And Mr. Bill was like said, he's been chairman of the board three times. And I think he understands that when people came in there, we may totally disagree, but you come to the agreement that what is right. And that's how you win.
Back to budgetizing, we're talking projecting twenty-five percent and now for fourteen. Is that difference in the two numbers, is that, I think, is that just a wild guess back then or?
No, we hadn't done, we hadn't done none of the Franklin area or the Highland stuff. It looked like it was going to improve, but we were not going to put a number out there and then not do it. So, these are Franklin Highlands is your most property value. It outweighs other things. Uh, if you pull, um, and we'll have it later on, if you pull like Burnertown, well, twenty-two percent is pretty common out there. Because they got a lot of land, cattle east, a lot of land. And that's what really took me. Ten acres in Burnertown now is cheaper than it was in oh-seven. And so, that, so when we looked at those raw numbers, you had a lot of acreage area. When you got closer in, like I said, you had so many houses in trailers, mobile homes and that, that softened the burden.
How was that about forty percent of the land value?
It was last time, I had a realtor call me about that last time, like today. And I really don't have those numbers out. We haven't really looked at it yet. But, and let me explain that to you. Highland and Franklin. If everything went down fifty percent or if everything went up a hundred percent, the percentage those two districts represent should not change a lot. If it was forty, it should be around forty again. Because the size and numbers of properties you got is where the people live.
It's just a little bit different this time. It's showing that closer you get inside the city, landing closer you get from town, those values are changing a whole lot more than outside than the other districts. That looks a bit different than less. It changes less.
Yeah.
The health of the bank.
Yeah.
I mean, we've got an aging population. You know, people want to be close to facilities. They want to be close to rest, Highland especially, they want to be close to restaurants, um, the shops and, and don't want to drive the mountain roads late at night. And all that comes into.
Bottom line is what I think, Richard, you said this, revaluation is just that. It's, it's, it's assessing of what your property is versus compared to mine, compared to yours, compared to yours. It's not where stayed the same. Those are not going to stay the same. It changes. And this time, certainly, we've seen a decrease historically. I mean, as long as I'm there, we've grown here every time the value increased.
Correct.
But it's, it's a reassessing of what my property was compared to yours.
I believe the Highlander had a particle in it last week. I think, uh, the realtor they have every weekend, they said the downtown area, and that was up like twenty-eight, twenty-nine percent of last year in numbers and volume. So, you know, things are coming back. If it gets where we were, I don't know. But it's improved.
So, had we did it two years ago?
We would have probably, we'd have to interpolate a lot of different types of property. So, it had.
A ton of appeals based on new savings.
Yeah. I mean, we would still be tied up in Raleigh.
And I think we should have said about our tax department, you know, not everybody's going to be pleased with the tax bill we own. The phone call to Burnertown. This tax department and the innovations they've created over the years, uh, is being copied by a lot of other counties. I think county is, and not only from the maps that you see on the internet, but the collection rate. The collection rate Macon County is that much respect.
That makes sense.
And if, and if those things that, uh, that this tax department, they, you don't make a dangerous case for me. They have, they will too. And if they can handle it, they do a great job. And would you agree what the tax rate is wrong? As a nature, we should be very proud of the tax department.
Anybody else?
Appreciate it. Commissioner Real said we do have an excellent tax department. Anytime you give forty thousand parcels and determine their value, make that assist in writing your presentation, like we saw tonight, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'd be curious to see whether they have to do that. Personally aware of the county, they're going through the revaluation process, they've paid, uh, well more than two million dollars to do that process.
I need to throw that in.
It's just, it's such a, and as far as dealing with public, excellent public services and they, they do it day in and day out. And they're just very, very proud of that tax department and the leadership.
Anybody else? Any other questions? Audience, media? Any questions? This is hard to ask. Thank you, Ted. Chris, the transition. Appreciate, then we emphasized something that Richard said, that when you get your actual appraisal, there is a legal process. If you disagree with that, you think there was incorrect information used, by all means, make a phone call and check that. It's not applicable until you pay the taxes next year. Then the tax will be paid now. Next year, the taxes have been well advanced. There's a process in place, as you like to say. When you get that tax bill, everybody's got to look at their own and decide if you think that's fair for your property. If you do, fine. If you don't, then there's a process. Anything else? Thank you, Richard.
I appreciate it.
We'll, uh, we'll stand in recess for about.
What do you think, Richard?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, resolution. Chester, you want to raise your hand?
Certainly. This is a resolution regarding the time for general reappraisal of real property. Generally, there is a copy of that resolution in your agenda package. Uh, basically, I have had a conversation with Mr. Lightner. Mr. Lightner, I think, has indicated that, uh, we would like to see the county go from, uh, an eight-year or octennial revaluation period, uh, to a four-year period. And, uh, this resolution is designed to accomplish that. I will note for you, uh, it brought my attention, we had a diagram there in the third paragraph. We refer to it a year as, uh, one thousand fifteen, obviously, that's been two thousand fifteen. I have corrected that on the copy that I took out.
General debate or a motion? Fisher, take a motion for a second, 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 Commissioner Field. What this does is establishes a four-year cycle for revaluation, uh, considering that. So, we'll revisit this in two thousand and nineteen. Or somebody. Thank you. And they will.
They will.
Motion second, this is.
The resolution can be changed by future board.
It can be cha, it can be changed by this.
Sure.
If it chooses to, uh, anytime the board wants to take that. Well, perfect example, that is the fact that it was all a four-year board on the chemistry.
Mr. Chairman of State, to have that study made, Mr. Bill come out of the Mecklenburg, uh, they're, uh, they're going to get it down four years cycle in the near, real near future.
Well, we think they recycle a little bit of anything.
I, I can see that happening.
We don't know about what happened in Meckler. They spent a few dollars on anybody a free bill and, uh, those.
Kind of like gas prices, plan bay goes up, they were crazy for all of them. So, oil goes down, gas prices up.
Your motion second, we have a discussion. If you're done, I'll hear the motion say aye, 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 a toast. That motion passes. Four members have indicated they'd like to have a short recess.
Fair.
All right. We can have a recess for about ten minutes. We have an update on noise ordinance. Uh, if you were called to pass that to the planning board, uh, Matt a couple of months ago, I guess three months ago. And I think Matt has, we aren't intended to not to, uh, readdress that, Matt.
So, Mr. Hennessy, Chris is our chairman of the planning board.
Chris?
I don't know if you want to. As you're aware, you guys have planned more to look at issues with noise ordinance and how they've been addressed and some of the issues that have arisen. Um, over the last three months, we've had several public comments. Primarily, most of the comments were of the same music type issues that were addressed in front of your board. The, um, we've also had some several discussions with the sheriff's office and federal legal counsel and also with our legal counsel to discuss some of the issues. Um, the planning board has failed, have taken a vote and a majority rule that, that do feel that some type of noise ordinance is going to be, they want to recommend that we look at that. I would strongly encourage that if we do look at that, we take it very serious and always feel slow with the issues that are there and not the broad range of noise. We have a lot of concern from King Hunter's Club, Baron Hunter's Club, and also, you know, anybody with dogs. Um, some of the main points we've looked at so far in discussions are times of day, we enforce ordinance, uh, which office we enforce the ordinance. We commented on the sheriff's office, maybe. The, uh, and looking primarily, hopefully looking primarily at, um, intentional noise issues, most of them.
So, you're, are you looking for guidance from us?
We are. We're, we're basically at the point of looking at where to move forward with that or set that down with the company.
I don't, I don't mind to express my opinion first. I said this to start with, uh, I, I am not for, have not been for any regulations that comes forward. We've, we've addressed regulations twice since I've been up here in four years. One, we made all county copy, not spoken, which I look for. And the other vote we took that had anything to do with regulation is when we reduced the amount of regulation in the subdivision. And I can't recall another time we addressed regulations to do that. That's, that's it. So, this board has had a history of decreasing regulation rather than increasing it. I think we'd be very careful about coming up with a noise ordinance. Because what's noise to one is music to somebody else. The hunter who's barking dog and using it in, might be a nuisance to someone else. I think they'd be very careful to get into over-regulating their folks. I think what, what I would, I would not be able to vote for a noise ordinance if it came back here. What I would vote for is a nuisance ordinance. If, if, call it what you want to, but what I'm trying to say is the person who's deliberately playing the loud music for their neighbor, they're doing it in a vicious, uh, way. You know, I, I have no problem with having an ordinance that allows our sheriff to tell them to stop doing that. But as far as just an overall noise ordinance, um, I don't think I would vote for it. If, if, if we can, as you say, I would, I agree completely with you to go slow and deliberate. And if it were, uh, a noise to, to kill the people from deliberately disturbing their neighbor, then I'd be, I'd be voting for it. But that's, I think that's where I, I've been all along. That's where I stand with that.
Chris, if you, I, I would say the way, if you could specify the rates, if you put a radio at my house, they play it loud at a certain hour. That's kind of. They're with friends, they don't work now, the neighbors, you know, just, I look back on the tree.
But the problem, and I get, I've talked to our sheriff about this, the problem is, unless I'm mistaken, problems that we've heard, Sheriff, often are, are from people who have been disturbed deliberately late at night.
Maliciously.
Maliciously. And I agree completely with there being some kind of ordinance, an ordinance is a law, it's just a, by different name, that gives you the teens wet that say you stop doing that. I think we should have that.
What, what you're talking about, in my opinion, is a noise ordinance, specific noise ordinance, um, is what, what I think, and not just call it a nuisance. I think it is a noise. And, and, and we've, you all have heard, and I don't know if Mr. Higgins, and I know Mr. McShields wasn't on the board then, but we've actually, um, we've actually had somebody that has taken their stereo system out of their house, ran the cables across the yard to the other side of their chicken house, twenty feet from a neighbor's house, put loud, obnoxious, filthy music, full blast, and then leave their house for the weekend and let their neighbors in. And there was absolutely nothing that we could do about it. Um, that's how, that's how the motion.
Absolutely.
Um, we've, we've got another neighbor that we've dealt with all weekend and know all of you have gotten calls from her. She's not here tonight and she told me why, and it's a very good excuse why she's not here tonight. But, um, I suppose, but, um, uh, she's got the same problem with one of her neighbors and, uh, my guys were out there all weekend long and absolutely couldn't do it.
And, and the problem is when your deputies go out and tell people to stop doing something, to, to, to a common sense person, they can say, you're right, I'm going to stop it. If, if they're not, if they do it maliciously, soon as the deputy's tail lights.
No, they, they don't even wait till the tail light's gone. They tell the officer, you're violating my rights. I'm not violating any laws and I can't keep no music as loud as I want. And there's nothing we can do. The common person will say, well, they got to get out on the road sometime. We could harass them when you get out on the road. And that's not true either because then we are violating the rights. Because they aren't violating any rules or violations. And there's absolutely nothing we can do. That's what we're trying to address is that.
Public, pretty easy place to be, you know, loud music partying, all kinds of nights, gunshots, and motorcycles, four-wheeler, in the middle of the night. People living down, just don't let New York, that's a, that's a three.
I think a lot of people are concerned about the dog noise, the dog being included and, and I talked to Slane County Sheriff today and it's in their ordinance with the dogs. And they've ruled it unconstitutional. So, they've taken the dog part out of the noise ordinance in their form. They don't, they, they can't do anything about that. We're talking about, and that was my speaking to them, pretty consistent, but it's that malicious. Either one of you go, like you, what you said you were doing, I'm not going to repeat that, but most people would want to do that. But people took steps to make sure that if that happened, they would record it. There was cameras set up. And then what you would have had is you would have had your victim prosecuted for destruction of property.
Now, Mrs. Chris, we'll talk about the nuisance laws that exist there. Is that a remedy?
You're on the right property.
When you refer to nuisance law, what I'm assuming you're referring to is just a basic common law civil case to, uh, address nuisances, uh, and recover damages and or, 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 uh, relieve, uh, spaces and or, for, in spite of the season. Yes, those, those are there and they're real. And if you've got an honest business nuisance, they're effective. Problem is, is they could be costly. Depending on how involved the situation gets, you can have a situation where somebody's spending, you know, anywhere from twenty-five hundred to fifteen thousand dollars. Depending on how seriously it is. And most people, my experience with, for most people is, uh, if they, if they understand that they can be in trouble for doing something, most people will conform their conduct to a way. most people will conform their conduct to a way that not many people, and a warning is a little.
And a lot of times, Mr. Higginson, if these people were not on their own property, and were to go down the street and sit at somebody else's house and do the same thing he was doing at, at his own house, then you could get him for something, disturbing the peace or whatever, but because they're on their own property, there's, there's nothing we can do about it.
Wish that all the officers in the class on the board, at the plan board meeting the last few months, Chris and Matt have done a nice job leading this board through these discussions. I can assure each of you that all the things that y'all mentioned tonight, they're discussed, they're discussed thoroughly, and they look at every angle possible that I can see. One might be good, or one could be bad, but we can't be aware of the county like they were this. I, I think it is, would be good for us to ask them to investigate it further, and they're seeing things, and they're looking at malicious intent. And they're also looking at possibly giving the sheriff a little bit of teeth, uh, because presently, they'll tell you, you have people that'll laugh at them when they come out there to tell them to turn the music down, because there's no law or ordinance against it. I think if there is, it'll be a good preventative measure, because if there's a sheriff or something, a threat, then you're going to get hit, possibly with a jail or a fine if you begin to do this. Yeah, that would probably help us by what we can hear.
Two things I want to make mention of, one is, in the last eight years, it's the only time I've ever seen somebody have to try. Okay, it's going to probably be, um, these people are at their old age. The, uh, the other thing is, if, if this action was to take place, and we were to eventually pass a noise ordinance, you know, a lot of persons come up to it, it would not find significant, I mean, like, uh, or the ETJ.
Is your, your consent for that? I, I think, I think the general consensus is, you're for, uh, this nuisance, noise prevention, to give a sheriff a teeth to stop it, if that's a good.
Right, you're looking pretty big, it ranges, I think that's, they're very narrowly tailored. Got to stop dogs barking, and all that.
We'll have it very well done.
Do you, do you need to vote on that, or is that a consensus order? I think you got that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you, please. All right. And, I think, uh, in our reading schedule, uh, any changes to that, or are we ready to adopt that?
I passed out a copy of that, I think for each of you, in a nutshell, this is an actual regular scheduled meetings, that we make the second Tuesday at six P.M. in this location, your regular meeting schedule, uh, unless and to change it. In the event that second Tuesday of any given month should fall on a week of holiday, then in that event, the regular meeting for that month shall be on the next Tuesday.
Chester asking us to get between any conflicts, I don't think there were any, so we, I would entertain a motion of protest. Excuse me?
Both of you, please.
Good motion, second, please choose, uh, motion by Mr. Beal. I'll show, or any discussion, I'll favor say aye, aye, a toast, motion passes, immediate. You guys got that? Um, last month, we asked about the status of the SBI investigation, Chester, any information?
I've got a little bit of information, I think it would upset, one thing we do need to observe is that, uh, SBI investigation by statute do not have to be made public for most part, there are very limited portions of what they do is require my law to be made, uh, indeed, there are strong reasons why, uh, the law is that way. But nevertheless, I have spoken with Assistant Attorney and Attorney-elect Ashley Welch regarding the status of the commission investigation by the SBI. And in our conversation, Ashley Welch, uh, reminded me that SBI investigations can and often do take a long time. Sometimes she's, she's known them to take as many as three years. That having been said, uh, she reminded me that this particular case is probably different than the lion's share of the SBI cases, because in this case, the public is generally aware that there is an investigation ongoing, whereas most SBI investigations, the public really don't even know that they're investigated. Uh, and so, in this particular case, uh, you know, the, uh, general public oftentimes just really do not understand how long one of these investigations will take, uh, to complete. She did indicate to me that the investigation is not taking more time than many other SBI investigations. She indicated the process is ongoing, and, uh, she indicated that she would extend me the courtesy, uh, communicating with me further when appropriate to do so. So, in short, these are my words, not hers, uh, I think the county simply needs to let work the SBI do, of course.
Thank you, Chester. Any questions? Chester, thank you for doing that. Uh, under new business, uh, board assignment, we did, you, you guys have a copy of what people, board members are assigned to do? We can get you a copy of that, the, the, every year, the chairman assigns board members to be liaisons to different groups, I think there are probably, there are thirty or some on here, so the default would be, says Mr. Haven, it's not here, Mr. Shields is, the rest of us are the same, we just do Mr. Shields, uh, what Mr. Haven's, in large part, that's what I'm doing. I'll figure about that, uh, with a couple of changes, and I'll, I'll mention ones of the changes. Let's see, that would be specifically, uh, the plan board, uh, Mr. Tate has been a liaison there since his tenure here. That is a very active, busy board, I understand, trips up and down the mountain, uh, practically, talks with Mr. Tate about this, he's done outstanding job on the plan board, uh, but he, he has agreed to step down from that, Mr. Shields has agreed to serve on the plan board. So, we'll make that change, that will be one that Mr. Haven did not have, that Mr. Shields will have, uh, and everything else will run the same, except for the schools, uh, and, let's see, EDC. Yeah, let me deal with Shields. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, and then, Mr. Tate, I'm asking him to, uh, serve on EDC.
You're saying EDC or TES?
E, EDC. You, Gary, you should be on the T, you'll be on the T. Mr. Tate is asked to be, uh, EDC. Uh, that is, and you, and you're at the plan board. There are other changes on the schools, uh, the past couple of years, myself and Mr. Beal have been liaisons to the school system, that's our single largest budget, single largest expenditure, so we felt like it was important for two of us to be on that. I'm going to remove myself from that, and ask Mr. Shields, for obvious reasons, to serve as liaison to the school system, so make that change, it will be Beal and Shields that will be in the school system, everything else will remain the same. That means everybody's perfect. And if you need a copy of that, ask Mr. Tate. All right, uh, Parker Meadows Recreation Complex, we have, uh, eleven items to do with that. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Sheriff. We have got quite the lineup for the Parker Meadows recreational projects, and if you'll look to accompany these eleven agenda items, I have passed out a packet, and you will see, uh, if everybody can get their, get their hands on that, we'll, we'll use this to go through items one through eleven. The first page on the top of this packet will be CTEC Associates, and it will have a ten, uh, ten B one at the upper right-hand corner. Does everybody have that in front of them? Yes, that's it. And also, when discussing this, uh, and we'll get to it as we go down the list, we have a right-of-way agreement that was, uh, that was prepared, and it's been, uh, brought up in much conversation back and forth between Chester and Duke Power regarding the right-of-way at Parker Meadows. And I'll ask Chester, when we come to that agenda item, which is ten B three, to explain that to the board. Item number ten B one, this is from our engineer, Mr. Larry Lackey, the CTEC Associates. He has indicated that Penn Brothers to be the lowest responsible bidder, and E-Verify compliant as required by the general statutes. Now, if you'll recall, at our last meeting, we approved another well. We hit ten gallons per minute, our engineer said that was sufficient for water at the site. This contract that we're looking at here tonight is for a separate amount from that five thousand four hundred dollars. It's for twenty-five thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars, and what this will cover is the installation of the equipment for the new well, as well as the retrofitting of the existing well that is currently on the project. The, this will end up totaling thirty thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars for the entire water system and well line item. Uh, this was originally budgeted, we projected thirty-seven thousand seven hundred fourteen for this particular line item, so about seven thousand dollars less than what we projected, and then it's on time and under budget. So, basically, I'm asking, uh, to, the board to vote to award the contract for the remainder of the potable water system to Penn Brothers well drilling.
Technically, we'd be in fifty, we bid, and we would need to authorize your county manager to execute an appropriate contract on proof.
They got ten gallons, man, how deep can they go, how deep is the river?
Four, three hundred feet on that, and the existing well is on the beach, or probably on.
That's all I want.
So, yes, again, Mr. Lackey's requesting that we accept this bid upon that, I'll read into the contract.
Questions or a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, my friend, the county manager, uh, motion by Beal, second, second, choose.
Any discussion? If you're done, I'll favor say aye, aye, a toast, motion passes unanimously, number two.
If you flip, uh, to the second page, item ten B two, this is for the irrigation system at the Parker Meadows complex. Mr. Lackey, again, our design professional, is handling the bid process for this particular aspect of the project, has indicated by this that, um, Mr. Lou Gasper turned in a bid of thirty-four thousand two hundred fifty-eight dollars. Mr. Lackey has indicated this was the lowest responsible bidder, and the bid was E-Verify compliant as required by North Carolina general statutes. And again, uh, we will be asking the same thing to accept the recommendation of Mr. Lackey, and authorize me to then enter into contract with Gasper Plumbing on behalf of Macon County. We originally pledged that this line item, uh, projected cost for the irrigation system would be forty-four thousand nine hundred sixty dollars. So, again, about ten thousand dollars less than what we originally had projected for the irrigation system.
Motion by Mr. Tate, got a question.
I'll say, I'll say, just give a second.
First, got down to discussion.
Is there a misunderstanding of seventy-four thousand?
I've got the same question, I've said.
You've got, you've got the old one. Did, did you get one or?
No, there'd be no.
It's, we're written down pretty good on this, and I think all of them have, yeah, I think everybody has definitely the same spec.
Oh, okay, okay. Maybe, maybe that's, had a bear.
But I do think you need to, if you're going to afford this bid, you need to make sure you authorize your county manager to enter into the contract consistent with the bid, and, uh, any man.
Please, please, please. Motion, take. Second, take. Motion by Tate, second to Beal, uh, any other discussion? If you're done, I'll favor say aye, aye, a toast, that motion passes, number three. So, number three, which is, again, the approval of Duke Energy Right-of-Way Agreement, Mr. Jones works diligently with Duke on this, and I'll ask him to.
Gentlemen, I have distributed that each of you have coffee of the, uh, the easement, uh, for right-of-way. We have talked with Duke, and expressed, uh, some concerns that we had, and they have addressed our concerns. And, uh, I've had the opportunity to speak with the county manager, as well as Jack Morgan, who's worked with us in the past, with, uh, Roger Paner of the well, and, uh, we are now seeing eye to eye with Duke on this issue, and this document is consistent with those discussions. We're authorized to, uh, to convey these easements, we can certainly approve this easement tonight, uh, and, uh, authorize the execution of this easement by the chairman and clerk, however, before delivering it, uh, there will need to be approval by Macon Bank, but we do not anticipate any problems with that. Indeed, I have addressed the concerns that I have with the county, and I believe that those would be similar concerns with the bank, and so hopefully we.
Questions for clarification, or, uh, motion, motion by Mr. Tate, we have said, other? Shields, any discussion?
Thank you, good time to say this, but it's determined to happen more than, than telling everybody that worked on this, this, this is, uh, if you worked on that, it's, it's, so, we appreciate our work, we're putting in, we're very difficult, you know that, so thank you.
Any other discussion? If you're done, I'll favor say aye, aye, a toast, that motion passes.
As we move on to, to item ten four, Mr. Chairman, I will direct the attention to the board, you will have in your, uh, consent agenda Budget Amendment Number Ninety-One. And as I discuss, uh, items four through eight, basically what we're doing is, uh, further explaining the items that are contained within the consent agenda. So, I'd just like to bring the attention to the board of that, and in approving any synergy in the, uh, basically, specifically, Budget Amendment Number Ninety-One, um, it would indicate the approval of these four items for discussion. So, beginning with, uh, number four, consideration of the contract amendment, then with contracting the enlargement of the dugouts. If you recall, the contract was for both Penland and Ward, that were originally approved by the board, contemplated dugouts that were eight feet wide by eighteen feet long. And as the project began, and construction began on-site, we had a site visit, uh, those that had been involved in the project, myself, our design professionals, Mr. Ward, and recreation staff, and we looked, uh, at the project, at the actual dugouts, as they were staked out on the ground. And eighteen feet long is very short, and to give you some comparison of our facilities that we have now, the dugouts at the senior league field are six feet wide by thirty feet long, if I'm not mistaken, and the little league field, uh, at the Macon County Rec Park, eight, they're actually longer, they're actually nineteen feet. So, it would be smaller than those dugouts that are currently our little league field. And as we discussed this, and looked at surrounding parks that are in neighboring counties and neighboring states, that would ultimately, if we open our doors up to the, to the travel law industry, as we have discussed and talked about during this project, we felt that eight by eighteen feet dugouts would be substantial. It's deemed, uh, status quo for these parks, uh, in terms of dugout length, to have dugouts at twenty-four feet long. So, what we're, as a result of that, what we're proposing with this recommended, um, change order is to increase the length of those dugouts by six feet, to make them twenty-four feet long. And as we're well aware, there has been many circumstances that, that we have, uh, that has kept, that have come up against us as we have worked through this project, that have been out of our control. And as, to adjust to that, we have taken. And as, to adjust to that, we have taken many cost-saving measures, if those ever seen in this project. We've utilized county staff when available, maintenance staff for labor, construction of the maintenance building, installation of water lines and such. We have Jack and Tom and building contractors, rating contractors, that had numerous conversations on what we can do to save costs as a result of, again, these circumstances that we were unable to foresee. We have also reached out to outside agencies, such as Duke Power, and as we're working with them right now to receive grant funding that will go towards putting new access in at the park with that grant. All of these measures that have been taken were a product of value engineering, and the dugouts as originally included, that was approved by the board at eight by 18 feet, are a product of just that, value engineering. But moving forward, however, we feel that if we, if we compromise the dugout size and leave it at 18 feet, we're compromising the maximum potential that this park is capable of. We want to be competitive among those parks that are currently sought out by travel law tournaments. We want to be, we want to be the best in the business, we want to be the best in the state, the best in the region. And in doing that, we would strongly recommend that we're considered as opposed change orders that would make up items number four and five on this particular, on the agenda tonight. The first one, as you'll recall, last week, we approved $103,338 change order to the Penland contract. Now, if you took it, leading up to this, we had to make site adjustments as we located the gravesite at Parker Meadows, which required a shift in our fields, and then it required us to recess four of the eight fields that were located at the park. In doing that, it required retaining walls and required dugouts that would also support, that would be earth-bearing walls, so we decided for the dugouts at these four of the eight fields. That resulted in a requested change order of $103,338. And again, that was just for the eight dugouts that made up those four fields that were recessed. With this proposed change order, the new, the new price for the Penland contract will be $133,742.
As opposed to?
As opposed to $103,338. So that is, you know, around that $30,404 increase to the overall project, but we feel it is an increase, as I had mentioned, that allows us to, allows the park to live up to its maximum potential, and it will allow us, at the end of the day, to have the best, the best product possible at Parker Meadows. So we, I'm recommending that the board strongly consider approving this change order.
Recreation layers on, I've spoken to the county manager a number of times on this, we've been at the site, looked at it. I completely agree with his assessment. Probably some people might should recognize that they got too small, and the time to correct it's now before they build. So I would agree, and Recreation Commission, I think was pretty much unanimous in their recommendations, manager, that they would bring.
It is in the consent agenda, but?
It's just the money. You defer this change.
The money is.
You have a motion here.
Motion, thank you. One, a project, we have a motion by motion to take, we have a second, second, we have a second motion to reel. Any discussion? How does that affect overall budget here?
Well, right now, it's going to put the overall budget where we're at, will of course be with each change order of the dugouts, will be $46,405, and that is, will go into the next worth of construction, that cost for his enlargement, but it will be $15,000. So with the change order of these dugouts, it's $46,405 that it will increase the cost of the project. But at this point, there are, of course, many variables that came our way with the location of the in-grave site, which is still in discussion with the Eastern Band as far as contribution on that goes, and we're hoping to start seeing some resolution to that soon. Aside from that, there are other items in the project budget right now that are uncertain, like the paving. And that is, that's a big numbered item for the project, the playground equipment, the bleachers, and items such as that, that are fluctuating, and we, as we go and talk to each of these people, these are still projected numbers in there. So until we have hard costs back on those items that are still up in the air, it's hard to paint the overall picture right now.
When we had to, when we had to rotate the fields, they made the changes. That was one of the changes that I think, one of the positive changes, we dropped the level of four of the figures. It actually saved money in grading, so at this point, we're, we're, we're in business, but as he said, I hear on that.
The paving, the playground equipment, I mean, you're talking $100,000 on playground equipment, $50,000 projected for the asphalt and the gas prices coming down, you know, that could be much lower than at that time. So we're just, we're having a wave, it's kind of a work in progress movement.
To the extent that you, our county manager, asked you to pay over on behalf of county manager, the motion would second. Any other discussion, gentlemen? And I will commend our county manager, he's done a lot of work with this project. On time, on time, and under budget. I would, I would support this decision. Any other discussion? Hearing that, all the papers say aye. Aye opposed. That motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving right along to item 10B5, we have the consideration of contract amendment to the Ward construction contract for enlargement of the dugouts. Here again, the contract sum prior to this change order was $439,000, or $439,500. This change order to increase the stick-built dugouts, if you will, from 18 feet to 24 feet is going to result in a contract price increase of $16,001.28. That'll bring the new contract sum to $455,501.28. Let me point out, I was in front of you there, Derek, I talked about quite a bit. The original contract for Ward was $499, and we reduced that by 60 because of previous change order down to $439. This takes effect up to $45, which is still $44,000 less than the original contract. Is that correct?
Questions?
I've motioned for a change order.
County manager, five West Main Street. Somebody say, say, Shields? Discussion? Hearing that, all the papers say aye. Aye opposed. That motion passed.
If you'll flip the page, you'll see a chart here, and I would have to say that this, this chart and all the, all the information that we're bringing to the board and I, this product did a lot of hard work on, on part of the county staff, and glad to have Jack Morgan here, Tom Ritter, that's working with us on this project. Lori, that's created this spreadsheet, everything you're seeing, you're presenting, these ladies you all have, spend a lot of time putting together. And this is a spreadsheet that Lori's put together, and her and I, we're talking the other day, wanted to get some idea of where we were at with the total gravesite cost and what the actual hard costs associated with the location of this gravesite has affected this project. If you will look, I have scratched out here to the left on the middle column on invoices pending, item number 10B6, which is the payment to Sprinkle Surveying, associated with site adjustments. Basically, what happened, when we rotated these fields, as a result of locating the gravesite, we had to restate the off-field, we had to restate the infield, we had to restate the dugout, we had to restate everything. So that's the survey crew, we went back out there. These two particular survey services, both the invoice day, well, one here, one being for $4,066.25, the other being for $1,785, is a result of the resurvey and the office costs that were associated with that field ordered by Mr. Warren Sprinkle. And I would be asking the board to authorize this money to be moved in contingency into the professional survey, reimburse Mr. Sprinkle.
That's actually separate from the government?
Yes. That is, that is.
This is probably, I guess, more of an make aware.
I think this is to approve the invoice. Those others above, has, was that to be paid or?
We're gonna, yeah, we're coming right down the line on that, so we'll, that will be next on, next item on the agenda, we'll discuss the same thing to Lackey, the same thing to Mr. Ritter. Again, legal counsel. We do all the.
I think if you're inclined to approve them all, yes.
Definitely.
If you're not, if there's one or more of them, you're not.
Okay, the same thing. You want to go right down the line to?
Eight twenty-five, he was billed us on eight twenty-five, has he been paid that much?
On item number seven, he has not been paid for the money. It was for the entire site, construction drawings, the gravesite discovery, we had to do redrawing of the whole project. This was submitted on eight twenty-five, and as we continue to discuss reimbursement with the Eastern Band, and Mr. Lackey, Mr. Lackey has indicated like the other gentleman, that he would like to be paid, and I can certainly sit in and respect that, but we.
I'm bitter, I'm not sure.
That's what, we need to talk about that.
Go ahead.
Is the noise ordinance in effect yet? This is in the amount of $11,950. If, moving right along to, to Mr. Ritter, as you'll see here, this comes from a larger invoice, this is just one item of a particular invoice from Mr. Ritter. The $2,500 is for the structural design. Mr. Ritter had an engineer that worked under him that redesigned the dugouts and the paint wall, that came as a result of the gravesite discovery, and us having to recess the off-field. This is an amount of $2,500. Furthermore, Mr. Ritter has provided additional services in the amount of $6,850. And as we have run over these numbers, Mr. Ritter, it's estimated that around 80% of this $6,850 could be, can be attributable to the gravesite location, but for the purposes of this discussion, this $6,850, this $2,500, Mr. Ritter has other reimbursable expenses of $11,000. There was another $350 by engineering for the redesign of the dugouts, 18 by 24 feet long. And again, that was $350 additional engineering costs that we incurred there. There was $750 reimbursable cost for a critical path management schedule that Mr. Ritter worked with Mr. Ward and Jack Morgan on in preparing, and Jack Morgan can tell you right now that that thing's worth 28,000, so 20,000 people are coming in the project, how long they're going to be there, and they'll leave. So that's been a very big asset, as we are getting into a very busy time at this project with a lot of people going in and out. And we have other $957 that will, or excuse me, those two total $1100. And so with that, the total on Budget Amendment Number 91 for Mr. Ritter is $10,450, and that is what we'll be approving to pay Mr. Ritter. And again, these are expenses that are outside the scope of his originally approved work. That is why we're appreciating it.
Questions, gentlemen? Do you find to vote, vote together with the motion to be approved? No? She's a question.
We can't, it's a, as our terms here, if you find to vote for all three of the motions, second and third, we can discuss that. One bottom, one top.
First discussion, chairman, I would never vote for this. Change order to the total amount of, I guess, the total of that directly sitting before that is in terms of keeping up?
Yes.
And that would, that would include the, the associate, Ritter Architecture, Sprinkle Surveying, additional costs incurred, due to locations there. Second, second, Mr. Shields, that is, that is included. The county manager pays. Actually, these are just in. What was that total again?
It's round, the actual total is $74,656.93. But of course, on both amendments, I do round dollars, so it's $74,658.
Is that for all additional work, or is that just total invoices?
That's for at least three figures in invoices that are outstanding.
And, and the extension of the dugout?
Yeah.
Construction.
I was thinking there was additional plenty in that, that there's, there's a.
We have motion and second.
Like Derek says, I was actually for 28 as well, the budget minimum.
Now, any discussion? Given back to your question, Mr. Gaitan, this is costed, we should have activity in invoices that are directly associated with gravesite, so that will, we'll have to continue negotiating with the Eastern Band.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to be clear, so that you might get to put this down. This particular vote is on the last three items. Correct? Because the other two items have already been proposed.
That is correct.
That's correct.
So the $78,000 number included those two prior matters, and that, to those points, I would try to bring attention to, I think what you're approving is an invoice for seat, invoice for services, proceed, had for typical service of $11,950.
Right.
Twenty-five hundred for Ritter, another 54, eighty for Ritter.
There's more for Ritter. Just say Ritter's total is $10,450.
Yes.
You'll go by what you have in there, choose a package, get it, those three amounts you have.
And then there are two numbers for Sprinkles, $4,066.25, and $17,000.
That is correct, but we've already approved the first two, you previously mentioned, so yet that is, that is correct.
Chester, did you slip the holiday in the script on this one? No, I just said $8,000, a lot of money to add now, because those new add-ons.
Thank you so much.
Any other discussion, gentlemen? Hearing that, all the papers, the motion say aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes.
Moving on to item number, agenda, item 10B9, if you'll recall at our November 18 meeting, Mr. Mason presented two options that were to be a monument, to observe the gravesite. This monument included the design and landscaping around the gravesite. Following this presentation, I made it clear by the board that when Mr. Mason go back and get some costs associated with this monument preservation, Mr. Mason has done that. If you will look, here's the first drawing, 10B9, is an option of one. As you'll see, I wrote on there, this was the more enhanced option. Mr. Mason has spoken again with contractors and landscape architects, and has estimated the cost of $25,396 to four option points. And I would like the board to note that there is a grade that goes over the top of the monument that is made of rebar and maintenance. This is, this is, this $25,396 is assuming that maintenance constructs this rebar grade. Maintenance, this is, this is, this twenty-five three ninety-six is assuming that maintenance constructs this rebar grate as well as the installation of the benches at the monument. And also, this number does not include the information kiosks that are to be located at this monument because discussing with the Eastern Band, they had a connection with someone that is currently does bear fifteen dollars worth for their historic site. So that was option number one. Option number two was the more basic option, is nineteen thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars. The best paid cost that Mr. Mason came back with us, to us with on that. That is the next payer behind there. And again, the same assumptions, maintenance will construct the rebar grate over the top of the monument as well as the installation of benches, and this does not include the cost of the information kiosk. And I, I would just like to, to, uh, what this is not, um, I think at the last meeting, in discuss, in the board's discussion, what, what we wanted to do, and we had spoken with the Eastern Band regarding this, is to get the cost associated with it so we can present that to the Eastern Band. And that's what they told us they'd like us to do, and see if they would be, um, suck ability to help us with.
That's, that, no, why don't we present both these to Chairman?
Yes.
That way she's, and let, and let them make the decision.
Right, that's what we did.
And they could be changed, Mr. Chairman, and that would be, you know, if they want any kind of money, you know. The foundation is a great base, if they have to start this come under their aid, if they could do this, they could not, as far as changes are involved. The district preservation, they cannot, if they can, this is contributing what they can do. So this will be generally my plan. And if they want to make changes, that's their own design, whatever they want to do. So that's it.
So just maybe, we, we don't have any action on this, so if this, right, just authorizes to, to, uh, to take this to the...
I don't, I feel happy to say that our body will just be changed, but, uh, Dr. Chairman, and, uh, and the members shall be, will give report, I just, uh, I just think.
Question? Yes, chairman.
How far is the mall, mall side from that building? Between, between lead field and home field and right field?
What is, is going to be dead center, basically in the middle, center of the, of the walkway?
I don't see that. About all? Is it part of the way?
Oh, it'd be, it'll be here. It'll be a concrete, it'll be a concrete structure. It's, it's not, it's probably two hundred feet long plate, maybe hit. I mean, this will be public construction, like...
I don't know the grates, is that what you're covering, that, that, do we, we don't shoot? Grates are designed to keep people from digging in there.
And, and also, it's going to go, the, it'll actually be about eight inches below the top of, of the concrete. And what that's designed to do is to put dirt on top of that and plant, plant on top of that.
And that will give you, this, the wall, so?
It will be in a concrete encasement. This, this right here is a concrete structure that totally surrounds the whole graveside.
So baseball, some roads, those type of things, not causing problems?
It'll be totally encapsulated by concrete. People will be walking to, walk, walk through their gate. It's about, I'd say two hundred feet of the long white, it's not, it's two hundred.
It's probably part of the mad area.
Cause their fence is probably sixty-five, and this can, it's over there.
The outfield fence is three hundred feet, it's this, it's this side of that, so it's just...
The foul ball, it, it will, it'll be, it's in, yeah, it'll be, oh.
But the sidewalk is going to be existing anyway. And what you have, there's something to check is, this, what it is now, Mr. Shields, is just a mound of dirt. And we got to fix it somehow, this is our...
It's, it's going to erode down, if that's... With time.
Which is reason for a concrete, see, if it can be reinforced, I would, it'll be a structure.
It's changed, yes. That, you're close, I guess.
I guess, go with it. Okay, moving right along. Item ten V ten, authorization of county maintenance staff for onsite work. Again, at our November eighteenth meeting, the county commissioners here approved the utilization of maintenance workers for four items. That was the maintenance, that was the maintenance buildings lab, the direction of the previously purchased maintenance shed, the installation of water lines and electric line in the maintenance building with a new well and to improve the existing driveway. Spoke to Mr. Morgan today. You can safely say ninety-five percent of this work has been completed that was authorized at the last meeting. And labor and materials are estimated to come in at around eighteen thousand dollars, which were previously authorized. What we're asking you to do tonight is to authorize maintenance workers to perform additional duties on top of what was authorized November eighteenth. These additional duties are trench and install approximately five hundred feet of one and a half inch PVC water line from the existing wells to the adult concession building. Trench and install approximately four hundred and fifty feet of one and a quarter inch PVC water line from the adult field concession building to the picnic shelter. Trenches install approximately four hundred and twenty feet of one and a quarter inch PVC line from the new well to the youth concession building. To dig trenches and install approximately two thousand feet of appropriately sized electrical conduit in the exterior of both the youth and adult concession buildings to the Duke Energy provided transformer, to the field scoreboards, and to the proposed batting cages. Now, the labor and material cost, when Jack and Steve, Director of Maintenance, sat down and looked at this, we project the cost for these aforementioned four items, labor and materials, to be twelve thousand dollars. So the reason that we're discussing what was authorized last week at eighteen, and what was authorized this week at twelve, if you will recall, North Carolina General Statutes requires that when you're using your own forces for the project, that it remain under fifty thousand dollars in this case. And so right now, um, we're at eighteen, and we project this going to be thirty. So we're clear on that. And again, the maintenance is, is capable of doing this, and they'll do us a very good job. And with that being said, I'm going to ask the board to authorize maintenance staff for these onsite work. Should I just lay down? We have motion. Some voters, and we've got a motion, we have a second, I take, uh, discussion.
Thank goodness for the great management.
I mean, they do say at this point, this is where our manager and staff have worked to pre-keep costs as we've gone through, uh, hoping we'll see some additions from other sources, but, uh, we don't have a, we don't have a check. Very well done. The last item was... You just had, end of the discussion. If you're not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ode. She had something to say. Sorry to jump in, Mr. Chairman. Last item was an agenda addition, uh, item ten V eleven. And this is to appropriate from project contingency, or to transfer from project contingency to the professional fees line item in the project budget in amount not to exceed nine thousand sixteen...
What do you think?
I'm on item, ten V eleven, this is one of the...
This is, I agree with you.
Mr. Sprinkle, sir. Yes, okay. Yeah, I just got cut off in the coffee around here. Page. Uh, Mr. Sprinkle, uh, is going to, upon approval by the board, we need as-built flats for the Parker Meadows project. And it's crucial that we begin working on these as-built flats now while the trenches are open before we start covering the water lines and electrical conduit and stuff back up so we can get an accurate picture of weather out on the ground. Uh, Mr. Sprinkle provided us with an estimate for this, uh, six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the field work, construction of these, completion of these as-built flats. So with that being said, I would ask the board to set an amount not to exceed nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the project contingency to the professional fee line item in the project budget.
Authorize, yeah, yes.
Authorize, yes.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, it's the fees on the next, this is one of the things that are already on fees, and everything after. Today can't be done, leave you know, working that, my life. If it exists, we can park, we can be ready, we have a diner now. So I think this is, it's going to be one of those things for the long, long time to come. If you have water, if you have a power problem, you can track it right back to it and not have to dig up like the old jack, if that's so.
It's very good, you know.
This is one of those things, every time that we come into the concession, uh, I like to approach with the proof of the, the amount specified given how many draws the place, whatever, for second.
We have second. Oh, second, we have second, we have a discussion.
Just a big letter on this, and y'all are appropriate questions, if you can hear. That Derek said, taking from the project contingency, because there's some issues, uh...
It's, no, it is, no, he won't.
No, he won't. So his authorized this, this?
Yes.
Jack, do you know if that will be, I mean, I know there'll be paper, will that be out so long? I mean, he'll be on CD, we can keep it. Will we just buy it back somewhere, we can always give up, we can, don't worry, it may.
Probably the nice thing to do would be to have a large copy of it that on the side of, inside the maintenance. They'll have one.
I'm not a, to stay on surveying costs, but I'm just seeing what we have on price for this here as well. It's a good price, about a price, I don't know.
That was, uh, Lamar has worked with, in, uh, lack throughout the whole project, be very familiar with the project. And, uh, I know these costs, they're pretty efficient, and with their engineers speaking with those contractors and projects, these costs are... And Jack, we didn't, we're sure, right, uh, these costs are... Costs, uh, uh, where else? And what was important to, to note too, that as, as the chairman said, this will be, uh, very important.
Oh, yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with him for it, it's just...
And, and Lamar also said, Lamar also said that there is, speaking to Mr. Sprinkle about this, there is, uh, possibility, this is an amount not to exceed, there's a possibility to not utilize all these matters. It's on the amount of field work and off-site, but this will be covered. Any other discussion? If you're not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ode. That motion passes. Uh, the consent agenda, we talked about that. I've made this November eighth meeting first, this is minutes eight nine three ninety-four. And this is about engine, we'll remember, Gary, what we do on this, consent agenda, I think, we'll do that too, but, uh, I started... Those things typically you don't discuss, um, uh, you, you, you just put one item and pass it. If any one order, if you see something, you want to, hey, wait a minute, I want to talk about that. If you ask that, you take it out, consent agenda, and we'll discuss it. If this one I did, I'm going to say is really out, if you'd like to take out a consent agenda. If you're not all in, I will take a motion to approve. We have a motion, that's second, Mr. Shields. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ode. That motion passes. Mike, for instance.
Can I go back, or is number eighty-nine? I know, but I, I'm... On the, retire the ambulance, is this on the new ambulance, or is that open?
That's probably insurance.
It says exclamation, retire ambulance, has been red, so... Is that an increase in policy, an increase in?
That was, uh, that was the insurance one. I couldn't tell you specifically, but anytime...
They got the money?
Yes, the insurance company got it.
Three, three, yeah.
Three fifty-four for us to fly towards repair and repair.
That's all right. Very good. Gary, anything else before the close session?
Let me, uh, I'm going to take sixty seconds, personal privilege. I appreciate our ambulances yesterday. Uh, over the weekend, I, I fought a kidney stone all weekend, and, uh, I found me one eleven o'clock seventy-nine. A lot of pain. I woke up yesterday morning in some pain, so my doctor prescribed, not pain medication, it's an anti-clinical. It's, it's like a, uh, a ibuprofen, type name is a prescription. So there's a lot of pain, woke up, it's about six-thirty, took this on an empty stomach, it clearly says, take it with food. And I had to fight consciousness, and I almost knocked me out, I was shaking, my wife called nine-one-one. She thought I was dying, and she was not sure if I paid her life insurance or anything. And the ambulance came and took me up, one of you, and I was okay. They did a great job, I appreciate our ambulances. I've never needed one, hope I don't need one again, but, but it was a good experience. I feel fine today.
There is, that's the point.
I feel fine today. Don't, don't, if it says, take it, if it says, take it with food, take it with food, that's all I got to say.
Uh, our, our attorney has requested a close session. You anticipate any action? Will be no action.
Merry Christmas, sir.
Yeah, Merry Christmas. We need a motion to go a close session.
No, no.
Okay, second, I take it, all in favor, aye?
Aye.